... three. One item on the agenda, presentation from Engage Learning. We haven't heard from Engage Learning yet, but we're gonna... Councilmember Peacock was gonna give us an overview of what he understood about the program. Councilmember Peacock.
Appreciate that. So, Engage Learning is a nonprofit. They exist here in Norman and they do work at elementary schools and middle schools. Currently, I think they're... And there are a handful of Norman elementary schools. I think they're in every Oklahoma City middle school. And they just engaged a partnership with Tulsa Public Schools. So, they are rapidly expanding across the state. What they do is basically... They do a lot of things, but the thing that drew my attention to them, they do hands-on design-build projects with young kids, basically. Mr. Keaton, please come join us over here. I was just giving them a little program.
Thank you.
So, what drew my attention to Engage was they do design-build projects with grade school kids. Basically, they teach them not only design skills, but coding, fabrication skills, and then they actually go out and students construct these projects. So, they're student-designed, student-constructed. And that's just one of the many things that Engage does. They've embarked on several other initiatives, and I'm gonna let you kind of dig into what you guys really do, because you're the best salesman of it, so.
Okay. Well, thanks, Matt. And I apologize for being late. I got caught coming down from Tulsa, so I appreciate the chance to talk to you all. So, Engage is seven years old. It's a Norman-based organization. We're a nonprofit. We've got a really robust Facebook site and an old and outdated website. So, if you look that up, you're gonna miss a number of things. But to give you a sense of the scale, we've been very fortunate, I mean, for an educational organization in a state that struggles with public education, which I'm a huge and passionate believer in. We've grown relatively quickly, so we have about 20 full-time staff. Most of them have degrees in engineering, computer science, architecture. And then we have about 45 part-time staff. And a lot of them are college students from OU or OSU who help with our projects here in Norman or in Stillwater. Our biggest partner is Oklahoma City Public Schools, where we have supported, whether it's a deep dive into particular schools with them, we train all their STEM teachers at the elementary level every month. We work with their summer school program. One example, we supported last summer, 10 different sites, almost 3,000 students. We were there every single day, leading the STEM program for those kids. Two years ago, retention was 36 percent. Last year, it was 95 percent. And it's anecdotal. We don't have the hard data, but if you ask anybody who was part of that program from OKCPS, they'll say it's kids did not want to miss their projects. So, there's a really close tie between attendance at a lot of public schools and what we do with students. The opportunities here in Norman, I think, are pretty significant for us. I'm a parent of two students who go to McKinley. We want to do more with Norman elementary and middle school students. We've partnered with every elementary school multiple times, all 17. We've done things with all four middle schools. We've had classes on the books at both the high schools at different times. So, we have a really, I think, rich relationship with Norman, but we don't have as much programming here. But we have a lot of talent. So, you know, we've got this incredible possibility and opportunity with OU students and then folks coming out of OU. We end up being a place for people who want to be part of education but don't want to be part of education can find a way in. And I think that's one of the many things that we need in Oklahoma, is folks who are really talented, who love kids, but for whatever reason have been turned off by some of the opportunities with public education as a career can find a way in to work with our children, to work with our youth. So, if Matt had brought to my attention and a few other folks, there might be an opportunity for a space in Norman that we could begin to use. We've got a huge opportunity for summer programming. We did... We had some... The Well has been a great partner with us since they came online, so we did some spring break camps there, and they went fantastically well. We've done some family STEM maker nights there, and 400, 500, 600 families have come... Not families, people. People have come out, but that's a pretty significant turnout, so we might have about 15 different activities, anything from robotics to drones to some of our sports lab program. As far as our support, we try, with the exception of our summer program, so it's a little ironic, that's what I'm talking about, we try to never charge anything to families. The kind of kids that we choose to work with are not, to be really frank, Edmund kids. They are the kind of kids who might have fewer opportunities, and that's exactly where we want to be. So, the schools we partner with in the city most richly are schools like Crutcho, which is literally on the side of the dump. I mean, Waste Management owns their property, and that's what they get to see every single day. That's where we want to be. So, we're at Crutcho five days a week. Mark Twain Elementary, 86 percent Hispanic. You know, all OKCPS public schools are Title I. They're definitely one of them. Really rich community, but we like to bring all these other opportunities. We have a maker space there. We've had for four years. So, right next to the school, we have a 2,700 square foot space. And I want to mention that because anything we would do in Norman would be at a larger scale but would not be new to us. We've dealt with some of these challenges before. We figured it out. We know how to keep those buildings full of kids working on projects. Most of our staff started at when they were in college, not most, but most of our early staff, at the Innovation Hub in OU, which if you've had a chance to visit down there at Partners Place, fantastic site. I want to see a place like that full of kids all day long. That's ever since they opened that place and we partnered with them even before they opened on our very first project. It was very inspirational, but at the same time, and their mission is not K-12 primarily, so I get it, but to have a space like that, or even larger, that is focused on K-12 students, both Norman and in the rural areas around Norman, I think, would be amazing. And then longer term, we've been fortunate to be able to grow some of our programs. I think this could grow significantly. I'd love to show some images of the potential, but imagine if you could cross kind of a hands-on making space with a children's museum. I think in five to seven years, there could be something, two or three stories, that would be at the center of Norman that would, I think, speak to this community of, we put our kids first. This is something that I certainly believe in, and the community that I've moved here to be a part of, I would love to help leave a mark like that that would endure.
Excellent. I appreciate you doing that. I think Bart kind of hit the nail on the head. The reason I was so interested in bringing them today is that they're a Norman-based nonprofit right now, and I want to make sure they stay that way. I mean, we got a great story here, a great success story, and I want to make sure it's a Norman story itself.
Do you have a space that you're looking at, or a size of a space that you'd need?
We have... We've talked about a few, and I'm... With hands out, I'm not being particular. So... But I will say this. So, in the 2,700 square foot space we inherited next to Mark Twain Elementary in OKC, very quickly was not large enough, because we have families there every single night. We do after-school program four days a week. We have a team of seven who's always there. They teach those students every day. I love the fact that there's a not economically prestigious elementary school in Oklahoma City that gets better STEM education, all 257 of those kids, than my kids do in one of the better Norman elementary schools, than the private schools do. I mean, when folks come in from Heritage Hall and be like, "How come my kids don't get this?" That makes me smile, because those kids are gonna be fine. They're gonna find a way. We want to serve all the students if we can, and especially those who don't have as many opportunities. So, I'm getting off the question a bit, sir. But we had looked at a space that you could throw a rock at, right over here, just on the other side of the post office. There's a pretty large footprint, and I wouldn't be surprised if over time we could grow into that quite robustly. Because we, in addition to some of the programs Matt's talked about, we have a sports science program that's a partnership with OU and OSU. It's a five-year deal. I just got a call this morning about, "Hey, we're looking to take that outside of Oklahoma." So, that's gonna become a much more robust program.
That rolling ball, you get into a ball, is that...
That was different. So, you may have seen that. So, that's our playground physics. So, they are aligned, but that's for elementary school students' focus. We did that at Lincoln, and we'd love to take that to more places. But this is a already funded five-year program where we talk about the science of sports with elementary and middle school students in partnership with OU athletes and OSU athletes. So, this Saturday, for example, we'll be at the Dream Center in Tulsa with eight of their starting basketball players doing a basketball science camp. We've done football science camp, softball, of course, baseball's coming up. But this has been such a powerful program that we can't keep up with the interest. And we see a lot of it as just a feeder to our other things. Yeah, two hours is great to talk about sports and science, but we want to work with these kids, you know, two days a week, on and on and on. Yes.
Yes, sir.
You talked a little bit about it, but what is your main funding source?
Main funding source right now is corporate sponsorships. We are... Even though they don't say this publicly, we're Devon Energy's largest recipient by far. They were one of our first sponsors seven years ago, and we've grown with them every year since, and that's continued to grow. OERB is a big funder of ours. We have a distance learning program that serves 3,000 rural Oklahoma students and teachers, 15 hours. So, it's not just... We don't really like touch point programs. We like real educational programs. So, that's a 15-hour minimum program with that many students. We have an entire team dedicated to that. We also have foundation funding. I was talking to Kaiser yesterday about some of our work in Tulsa and others. But very... The smallest part is parents put up money, even though that is part of it. Yeah, and then we... To kind of flesh all of that out, then districts, when they have the resources for professional development, they just pay us for services. Brendan.
Facilities Council has at your disposal currently the rec center at Reeves Park. It's vacant. It served as construction headquarters during the Reeves Park Norman Forward project. The building's in really good shape. It does provide indoor and outdoor space with a big park right next to it, and it's empty now. It's got some furniture in there and some things. The current senior center, it'll be vacated, you know, in the next handful of months. Staff plan, without any other direction, was to put together an RFP and just put it out there in the community and see what interest might be generated for Council to consider when deciding the highest and best use for those two facilities. And then the old Couch Communications Building is on a 90-day reoccurring lease cycle currently. I'm not aware of any other vacant spots.
Not in the Parks Department. We might... We might have, just depending on where they're willing to start, we might have space at a rec center or something like that as well, if it was possible. Irving, with your 12.
Well, in thinking about targeting the least fortunate neighborhoods, Irving would be that middle school on that side of town. And it's got, as I remember, a rec center that was still in pretty good shape, isn't it?
Still in great shape.
Still in great shape.
Probably better shape than Reeves, because it's been occupied.
Oh, good.
There's other interests in them. Both of those buildings were different.
How much have you spoken with public schools and getting their... I'm sorry, Matt.
No, it's okay. Go ahead and finish your question.
Public schools and their input into this.
In terms of the space, not very much at all.
Okay.
And we're open to something that shifts. So, for example, if there was anything available now, we would love to be able to use that for summer programming, but that doesn't mean that's where it needs to be over time. What I'd like to do, and this sounds grandiose, but that's how we've rolled pretty much, is where do you... Where would Norman like to see a $20 million building that's focused on kids? That would bring in lots of revenue from around the area. That's the longer-term vision. And if that's something that's a totally different conversation, that's okay. Near term, we would love to have a place to do remarkable things with kids, and that doesn't need to be a permanent spot, because we can move around pretty quickly. Yeah. Like, for example, last summer, we were in the Innovation Hub for the summer. All their extra spaces, we've outgrown that. It's not big enough anymore, but they've always been a fantastic partner, so that mobility is very possible.
Yes.
Yeah, I think you kind of hit the nail on the head. The way I've looked at it, there's a short-term temporary need and kind of a long-term, more permanent need. And so, I personally would love to see them go in the Couch Communications Building over here, because I think it's such a strategic centrally-located spot that it's just kind of that missing link between what we've got going north-south on James Garner and what will be going east-west on Gray Street. To get somebody like Engage in there that's got a kids and families demographic, which is something we're kind of missing from this core area down here. So, you start to think what that could do for the area. I mean, you get more services and more retail and commercial things that cater to that demographic. I just think it's... I think it's a really ideal fit in that area, and especially considering it's in the TIF. So, if we do something that's very impactful from a financial standpoint, and those are TIF dollars that we could recoup, it's very similar to what we were looking at with Factory Obscura. Same kind of idea, same kind of model, same location. And so, I... I mean, obviously, you guys all probably know that I support Engage and their endeavor here, but I would push for that building if it was a possibility.
Councilmember Foreman?
So, I really appreciate you coming. Love everything that you had to say, all that. I'm sure you're aware that right now, that space over there, we're using it as a temporary warming shelter. So, we are gonna fund it through the rest of the year, kind of a month-to-month basis, that type of thing. I have no intentions of vacating what we're doing there until we have some other solution. So, if that's the building that you're hoping for, whatever, like, what would this look like? Like, are you waiting? Do you want something in the interim?
We have... I appreciate the question. We have programming that will start July, June 5th. We have not determined where that's gonna be just yet. OU has offered us a space at a high hourly rate.
Sure. How kind of them.
Yes. And even with a discount, it's a high hourly rate.
Oh, sure.
So, we would... So, we do have a backup plan, but that would probably make it a net negative proposal for the summer for us, which we do sometimes, if we have other ways of having resources to even things out. So, there's not an urgency, but if there was an opportunity to get in there at some point, in addition to thinking long-term about something really remarkable, what's been happening, at least with our space and the model we've chosen to take, or at least the plan, is grow outside of where we are right now. So, for example, right next, I mentioned the Mark Twain Middle... I mean, elementary school, we have a maker space right next to it. There's also an empty lot. We have our iron net lot. That's where we will build to grow that space while we continue servicing the community and the students in the smaller space where we are right now. So, that would... Might be what it would look like, is we could, you know, find a place where we can work from, you know, work with students, do our current programming as we can construct something around it over time.
Do you think Reeves would be more attractive, since there's a park right there, kids, all that?
It has its attractions. And I looked at that place earlier. No one stumbles across it necessarily, unless you're going to Reeves. And I...
Not a bad thing.
That's not... Yeah. Not necessarily a bad thing. There is a lot of room to grow there. There's a lot of outdoor space. That building for the summer, I think we can make work. I've stepped inside that building before and thought, "Yeah, this could probably make work." There would need... But there's very little room to grow in terms of the building itself.
Sure.
Yeah, there would have to be construction, so there would be some constraints there. One thing... There's a model in Tulsa that I really, really like, so I don't know if you're familiar with the Dream... Not the Dream Center, sorry. The Discovery Center, that's the new building as part of their gathering place, just a couple of years old. So, you're familiar with the Gathering Place? And they had a small Discovery Center, was in a elementary school not too far away in north Tulsa. They built a brand-new, and of course, Tulsa's very good at raising resources to do things like this, a brand-new, very large space right at the foot of Gathering Place that's a STEM and science focus. That's not the point. The point is, what they do on that second floor is every single day, there's a class of TPS students who comes in to that space. And what I think to have something in Norman, whether it's whatever the location is, to have that partnership with the schools, that here's this remarkable learning opportunity for students, rather than build something at all 17 elementary schools, all classes would get a trip to whatever we call this space, to do hands-on, kind of high-end, 3D print, whatever kind of learning. I just love that model, and I think that's a way that we'd love to serve the community.
So, I am familiar with that. We parked there once.
Okay.
Parking anywhere else, but we did go in there. And it is a little pricey to get in. Is this something that you see, like, we charge for, for people to go in?
I think there would be different ways of thinking about it. And honestly, this is not something we spend, as an organization, our board has spent a whole lot of time talking and thinking about. This is, I think, it feels like the inevitability of where we are, but it would be very different than a space like that, because it would be a working space. For the students from Norman who come in, it's free. You know, this would be something we could give to the community. We'd find another way to resource that. But if we're gonna have a team of a dozen really talented folks in there, I don't want anybody sitting around at 10:00 a.m. You know, I want them working with kids, and if the way to work with kids is to bring folks from the community in on that constant rotation, I want my kids to get to do this kind of thing, whether they're in elementary or middle school, or by the time they're in high school is when it will happen, they'll be working there, you know, in the afternoons. That's my vision. But that... The kind of... Yes, there may be... Need to be a fee at some point, but I guess I'm trying to share with you the ethos we've always had of kind of service first, we'll figure out the money piece later. And that's given me a lot of sleepless nights.
Oh, sure, yeah.
But it's also, I think, created a lot of goodwill with our partners, and that's why we've never lost a partner. We've never lost a funder. They've only grown with us.
All right. Thank you.
Do we know the square footage of the sites that you mentioned? So, the Reeves Park Rec Center, the current senior center, and then the Couch Communications Building?
We definitely have them in a book. My guess is Mr. Olson doesn't keep those off the top of his head. We do think in terms of that summer perspective with other programs, that the 12th Avenue Rec Center is a big one. It's got some yard space. It's the biggest building. There is some summer programming there that may fit in very well with what Engage is doing, and that one may have the least amount of constraints on it for summer programming. So...
Right. So, we have summer programs at all three rec centers, and we kind of... Our model with Parks and Recreation, we want to make sure that childcare stays as a service, so we try to offer low-cost childcare, and we're very proud of that fact. We try to pack as much or more than any other high-cost childcare program we can into our rec centers. But we are connected with DHS, so there has to be some balance there. We have to make sure that we keep our square footage that's required by whatever we license by, but we'd love the opportunity to work with groups like you, especially to hit that STEAM model that everybody desires to get. And sometimes it's as hard to get those groups out there to interact with some of our groups.
Okay. And then that small building that's down there at Reeves Park, I taught out of it for quite a few years.
Oh, wow.
And there's some good... There's some good space in there. Bathrooms are only two or three.
There's two. There's a men's and a women's, and it's probably, I'm guessing, under 5,000 square feet out there. It's pretty tiny.
It's not a large space, but it would suffice for the summer, for sure.
Oh, sure.
We can make that work.
And it is comfortable.
If it's got bathroom and electricity and air conditioning and parking, we're good to go.
Yeah.
We can make it work.
And just in terms of a timeline sake, so Councilmember Foreman mentioned our warming shelter that's currently occupying the other location here down on Gray Street, and we've approved a contract through the end of June at this point. So, it would be impossible for us to move that for your June programming, but I think thinking about...
What did I ask you to do that?
No, I understand. I just want to be real clear about like what we have already obligated that space for and through. And I think that, you know, I think we need that service, and there's obviously an ongoing conversation about what we're gonna do, about long-term solutions for, you know, a permanent shelter and things like that. So, I think that this conversation is wrapped up in that a little bit, but I do agree with Councilmember Peacock that that is a really great location, like, to think about this in a long-term capacity. But we also have to make hard decisions about what's gonna happen moving forward. So, I really appreciate the work that you're doing. I agree that we want to keep this in Norman and expand opportunities and programming for our community. So, you know, I would love to have us find something for the summer so that we can, you know, start that relationship and then continue to work forward. I appreciate you saying that you're nimble and willing to kind of move around as needed, but I do think that it's important for us to start that conversation and to get you something this summer so that we can get you working for the community.
Appreciate that.
Councilmember?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of the comments already made. I think this location right here would be the best long-term. It's where I would want to see a $20 million building for sure, right in the middle of downtown Norman, and in a high-profile location, as Councilmember Peacock mentioned. We've got several street projects we're working on that are gonna enhance this whole area, and that's gonna be... That corner will be a focal point for sure, so... And the fact that you are a Norman-based organization, I absolutely agree, doing what we can to keep Norman businesses in Norman, Norman nonprofits in Norman, is something I definitely support and am all for utilizing whatever resources as far as buildings that we have, whichever of the options we have available that would work best for you. I think Jason was mentioning that their Reeves Center that you're thinking about, Daryl, moving HR down there right now because they're...
About ready to start the remodel.
They're starting remodel of building B or A, or...
C.
ABCD.
Cozy.
And so, that maybe... I don't know if there's another place you had in mind for them, but I don't know. And so, there might be even some room at the senior center potentially.
There is. There could be the... There is a lot of square footage, and we might be able to work on something there, especially if there's any crossover program that we could do for seniors while you're over there, but in schools and that session, to have kids over there at the same time.
That's that intersection at... It was the street that goes up there, halfway up Reeves Park... I'm halfway up the park.
Which one?
One that goes up...
Or which park?
No, the one that goes up to Eisenhower School.
Oh, that park. Highland.
High Meadows.
That's gonna be signalized. Boy, it took all four of us.
It's taken the last five, or six councilmembers to get that one going, too. But just I would be... Whatever of our spaces that would work for you the best, I would be supportive of lending those to you with a vision of a more long-term solution potentially right here, you know, because I think we all agree that's not the long-term solution for a shelter, but it's what we've had to work with, and so that's what we've been doing.
And I'd like to be clear, too. We don't have $20 million on...
Right.
Yeah. So, I just...
I know. It's shocking.
As a nonprofit, we just haven't had those kind of returns. But that is... I hope to speak something like that into being, maybe at this meeting.
Well, I suggest that what we do is look at a pilot... This is a pilot program, and that what we do during the summer, or allow Norman public schools during the summer to monitor, see how curricula fits together, all those other kinds of things, how coordination does. Because the kid moving part, we have nothing to do with.
Right.
We're just a space holder. I think there's a wonderful opportunity. If I had a choice, it would be to go down there into Lyons Park, where in the... Back where you've got... We've got some space down there.
Okay.
You say no, but some space down there that could be used for a building that's down by the Fire Horse House Art Center.
Interesting.
And it's in the center part of town, and it's in a bunch of other stuff, and it's a beautiful park, so...
That's always been my boys' park. Yeah, that's... We live really close to there.
And so, that would be mine, but that's one...
Mr. Mayor, with council consensus, what we could do is put together... It would be just a real short-term lease agreement.
Yeah.
We can meet with your team, open up all the doors, figure out what space works best for everybody, and agendize that short-term lease agreement before the end of May. And I wouldn't anticipate this one being a big giant, you know, 200-page deal, but something a little more user-friendly, just in terms of just like boilerplate things we have in a lot of our lease agreements like that. Insurance, you guys have insurance and all those cool things?
Oh, yes, sir.
So, those are boxes we can check early in the conversation and just kind of put in the boilerplate language for those provisions, without giving you a heart attack when you open the email, and just we'll make sure we're on the same page. So, if that sounds like a strategy, we'll go to work ASAP.
Let's give them some guidance. You up with that, or anybody opposed to it? Looks like out of curiosity.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I think this is gonna be exciting, and I appreciate the support.
All right. Anything else that the council needs to bring up?
No.
All right, and next meeting is 6:30.
There's more bun cake in there.
And there's more bun cake.
He did not, so we've been partnering... He did not, so we've been partnering.
I can sign.
Here we go. Excellent. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority, meeting of April 11th, 2023. Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Schuler.
Here.
Councilmember Lynn.
Still here.
Councilmember Grant.
Here.
Councilmember Tortorello.
Here.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Peacock.
Here.
Mayor Heitler.
Here. Thank you, ma'am. Will PAC 233 lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Item number one, a resolution awarding the inaugural James O. Harp Environmental Recognition Award in conjunction with the Norman Environmental Control Advisory Board. I need a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, and second, the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes. To adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the resolution. A resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, awarding the inaugural James O. Harp Environmental Recognition Award in conjunction with the Norman Environmental Control Advisory Board. Whereas Norman Environmental Control Advisory Board, ECAB, stands as an advisory, in an advisory capacity with respect to, but not limited to, the following areas of environmental quality control: air pollution, water pollution, solid waste disposal, liquid waste disposal, noise; and whereas the city of Norman entrusts ECAB with the duties of educating and assisting the public on ways people can help implement environmental quality control plans and recommendations for the preservation of public health and welfare of the city. And whereas volunteering one's time, talent, and resources has been a significant part of our American heritage and is critical that we continue such a tradition of giving and sharing to preserve the quality of life for the residents of Norman. And whereas Catherine Amanda Nairn has repeatedly shown her passion for helping her community by providing active participation and filling leadership roles for many groups and organizations whose purposes are to protect and improve our environment, including, but not limited to, Central Oklahoma Master Conservancy District, Lake Thunderbird Watershed Alliance, Blue Thumb, and the Cleveland County Conservation District, as well as by providing environmental education to residents at workshops and other events. Whereas Catherine Amanda Nairn has worked tirelessly to help the city of Norman stay a wonderful place to live and work, as evidenced by her many acts of service on various city boards and committees, such as the Environmental Control, yeah, Environmental Control Advisory Board, Plan Norman Steering Committee, Strategic Water Supply Ad Hoc Committee, and the Stormwater Citizens Committee. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, that the city of Norman, in conjunction with the Norman Environmental Control Advisory Board, does hereby award City of Norman James O. Harp Environmental Recognition Award to Catherine Amanda Nairn. Michelle Lautmeck, and are you here to introduce? There you are. I knew I'd hear you somewhere.
It's true. I'm sorry. Mayor and honorable council members, you know, I'm continually amazed by our community, and I know you know this because I'm always excited about it, right? And the reason that I am is because we have so many wonderful people in our community that care about our community and really work hard to make it a wonderful place for us to work, live, and play. And tonight, I'm here to really help recognize Catherine Amanda Nairn, whom I know as Amanda, and most of you probably do too, who has worked tirelessly since she's been in Norman to help us all have the environment that we deserve. So with that, without further ado, please join me in welcoming Amanda Nairn. Let me just say, I am also proud to call her my friend. I can't tell you how appreciative I am.
I'd just like to thank the Environmental Control Advisory Board for this council, for the award. I think the thing that most honors me about is that it's named after my friend James Harp. He and I started ECAB at the same meeting, and we left ECAB on the same meeting. And we got to be good friends and serve for 10 years. He's greatly missed, and I'm honored to receive the award that was created in his honor. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Item number two, a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman proclaiming the week of April 10th through 14th, 2023 is National Community Development Week in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion. Second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge the receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the week of April 10th through 14th, 2023 is National Community Development Week in the city of Norman. Whereas the week of April 10th through 14th, 2023 has been designated as a National Community Development Week to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership programs; and whereas the CDBG and home programs provide annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people; and whereas over the past four years, our community has received a total of $5,568,862 in CDBG and $3,250,028 of home investment partnership funds, and has funded a variety of projects that have directly benefited our citizens and neighborhoods; and whereas the CDBG and home programs are versatile funding sources that help us revitalize and improve our citizens' lives, and locally every $1 of these funding sources leverages $4 in additional private investment; and whereas countless projects within Norman would not have been possible without these federal investments. Now, therefore, I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, that City of Norman designates this week of April 10th through 14th, 2023 as a National Community Development Week in support of these valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and the economic well-being of our community. Is Heidi Smith here from CDBG? Would you come forward, please? Would you like to address the people and...
No.
No?
Michelle's got it.
Oh, there we go. Item number three. Wait a second, get a drink of water. Item number three, a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman proclaiming the month of April, 2023, is Fair Housing Month in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, and second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of April, 2023, is Fair Housing Month in the city of Norman. Whereas fair housing is the law in the state of Oklahoma and is consistent with the principle of equality and justice for all; and whereas the freedom to choose a dwelling has been one of the held, has been one held precious in America throughout the centuries; and whereas equal housing opportunity is a right guaranteed by, to all Americans under Title VIII of the 1968 Civil Rights Act; and whereas April 23rd marks the 55th anniversary of the fair, federal fair housing law, also known as Title VIII of the Civil Rights, Civil Rights Act of 1968. Whereas the month of April symbolizes a significant milestone for all Americans to rededicate themselves to this country in the state of Oklahoma's underlying premise that all citizens be guaranteed freedom of choice, and the state publicly reaffirms its public policy to eliminate all vestiges of housing discrimination wherever they exist; and whereas Oklahoma's housing industry and governmental entities are united in the common goal of providing safe and sanitary housing for all without regard to race, color, religion, sex, national origin, age, handicap, or familial status. Now, therefore, I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2023, is Fair Housing Month. Is Mary Doolan, am I pronouncing that correctly? Do you have somebody from her staff? Okay. Would you guys like to come forward and speak from the podium and perhaps introduce yourself, please?
Hello, my name is Ruth, and I am with the Metropolitan Fair Housing Council, and I just want to thank you all for this award.
My name is Shafik Islam, and I am the Enforcement and Testing Director for the Metropolitan Fair Housing Council, and I have been with the council for 18 years.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Kathy Fee, and I'm with the Metro Fair Housing Council, and I just want to thank you guys, and we appreciate all your help.
My name is Lorena Machado, and I've been with Metro for over 27 years.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council member, would you like to make any announcements?
Yes, sir. Just want to make sure everybody had a great Easter, nice and safe. We had a little bit of an emergency Friday night at OU. So thank God that that all worked out the way it did, and that was just a swatting because it could have been a whole lot worse. But the police presence showed up, but thank you, guys, because that was an amazing response. My next announcement is I got to meet with Mr. Jason Olson on Friday. He's our director of Parks and Rec. Told me all about what they do, all 67 parks here in Norman. I can't remember exactly how many acres, but it's a lot. We may be the city of festivals, but we got to be the city of parks, too. And if you look at the city's webpage for Parks and Rec, it says, "City of Norman Parks and Rec is dedicated to providing fun and engaging parks and recreational activities for the citizens of Norman." This right here is Francis Kate Park. If you look to the north there, you can see our brand-new soccer fields, and that right there is our, about a one-year-old, $150,000 workout equipment. If you look north, you can see what's left of Griffin, an abandoned building. You can see the pavilion being used to house, oh, three or four shopping carts, a tent set up inside there, and trash everywhere around it. On our actual court, that's human feces. So if you did want to go work out, you're probably not going to work out there. And so that's what $150,000 here in Norman is getting us right now. Here's another picture of Francis Kate. This is the basketball courts. So if your kids want to go play basketball, they're not playing there. This is the exact same place. You can't hardly see it, but this individual right here has about, no, I'd say about a 10-inch booty knife strapped to his waist. Now, that's his right, but if he's living on the streets, I don't think that's a very good, safe place for him to be with that knife. And just so you know, our police are now on the lookout for this individual because he was on Main Street at a stop train with his shirt off waving that knife at a train while there was individuals parked there. And if I would have been in my car with my family, with an individual waving a knife at a train, I would have been a little worried. So there's another picture of our parks. Here's a picture of the pavilion over at Andrews. This was taken on April 3rd. Here's the same picture, or the same pavilion, on April 4th. There's even more people there. All the shopping carts that were there the previous days back, all the items this person's collected up is still there. Me and my girls, last Sunday, not Easter, but the Sunday before, we did a park cleanup over at Colonial Estates. This is what my eight-year-old almost picked up. This is a picture of tinfoil that either had methamphetamine, fentanyl, or heroin smoked off of it. We all know what a minuscule amount of these substances can do when they come into contact with adults. I just thank God that I was there to actually pick that up and make sure my eight-year-old didn't. This picture was taken off of Main Street behind Sinclair's, where there was a homeless encampment set up. What they were doing is they were plugging their extension cords into the back of Sinclair's. This overheated the extension cords and burnt down quite a bit back there. That was the aftermath of it. I know an elderly woman, she's 89 years old, she lives in the neighborhood right behind there. She recently contacted me and said that she's had numerous individuals knock on her door, asking to go through her backyard. This is before she built a big privacy fence, so she has no view anymore, but at least she doesn't have to worry about individuals going through her backyard to get to their camp spots. This right here is off 12th and Al, or 24th and Alameda, in a little green space. It's right next to Royal Oaks. There is a creek that runs about 25 feet from here. This creek, here's another picture of it, the creek feeds right into the pond at Summit Lakes, and it keeps on flowing into the Canadian and on down to our lake. So when we say that this isn't a problem, it's a very big problem in our city. I've got numerous, numerous emails in just the past few days. I have videos of individuals defecating on storefronts. I have a doctor that just called me today, whose rent house had nine squatters inside of it. Every room had feces on the floor. It's an out, it's a travesty. The spot on 24th and Alameda, that's owned by a private individual. Who gets to clean that up? He does. Even though we're the ones that allow this to happen in our city, you all are the ones that's going to be held responsible for cleaning up all this mess, because the city won't do anything about it. So if you want something done about it, you need to contact everybody up here and let them know that instead of paying for a temporary warming shelter in the summertime, as asinine as that sounds, we are paying for a temporary warming shelter in the summertime. We all need to find real solutions and actually put some things on the agenda to get this problem solved now, because it's not going away, and it's just going to get a whole lot worse the longer we wait. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council member, Sheila.
Sure, I think that's a great segue into what I was planning to talk about tonight. So I thought it was a great thing to see our two proclamations talking about our community development and our fails, fair, sorry, proclaiming this Fair Housing Month. I don't know if anybody has been paying attention to what has been going on just up the road on 35 in Oklahoma City. There were two really major things that have happened within the last month, primarily targeting, you know, things and resources towards eradicating homelessness and thinking about opportunities for affordable housing. So Oklahoma City just recently allocated $12.5 million over the next two years to reduce homelessness in their community by 75%. These are the types of things and solutions that we need to be thinking about here in Norman. These are things that we can champion. Yes, there are issues, but I think there are lots of members on this council that have been trying to work towards those solutions. One of the other projects is an affordable housing project called Village on Walnut, which is proposed as a pocket neighborhood. So this pocket neighborhood will have large outdoor common area rather than separate backyards to develop a sense of community within the neighborhood with the houses. More than half of the homes in this pocket neighborhood will be set aside for buyers that are, have the income level no higher than 80% of the area's median income, and this is a partnership with two community housing development organizations, or CHODOs, in Oklahoma City. So these are the types of things that I already know that are happening at the city level, that our CDBG work is doing, that we have a couple of CHODOs in our community that are working on fair housing and things like that. So, you know, I think we do need to be talking about homelessness. It is one of the largest issues that we have in our community, but we have opportunities for progress to be made in our community. We just have to be able to think about those solutions. We've been talking with council for, since we've gotten our ARPA money, to move some of those projects, like affordable housing, forward, and to think about what a permanent shelter is going to look like in our community. So just want to say that we are talking about this here, but Oklahoma City is actually taking some action on this. So I would encourage our community to continue to look at what is happening in Oklahoma City, and to, you know, to my fellow council members, to continue to try to move these things forward that we've been talking about for quite a long time. And then lastly, I also would like to echo my thanks to our law enforcement officers, not only at OUPT, but also the city of Norman, the city of Moore, Oklahoma Highway Patrol, Oklahoma City Police Department, that all came together to our community on Friday. It was, I was out of town, it was harrowing to watch our community in this, kind of the grips of crisis. Thank goodness it was, you know, unfounded, and there was nobody harmed. But I think it's pretty clear that if something were to happen, our community was prepared and ready, and I know that our law enforcement officers are using that to continue to go over all of the protocols and things in case something like this might happen in the future. So just thank you to all of them for keeping our community safe and to showing up within minutes when the call came through. That's all I have.
I don't, I don't have a lot, but it's a pretty interesting way to start off earning your government badge or whatever you all are here to attend tonight, scout troop. That's it, I don't know. I was just kind of cracking up, thinking about if I was sitting in a scout troop, sitting there listening to the beginning of this meeting. Enjoy it. I hope you earn it. All right.
Council member?
Yes, I just want to highlight, we have Art Walk on the 14th from 6:00 to 9:00 in the Walker Arts District. There's a really great master of fine arts thesis show at Main Site. Those are all the kids graduating from OU with their masters. I encourage the community to go out and check, see what they've been working on for months. I think it's pretty interesting. They have a variety of mediums, and there'll be an experimental sound component, too. Original Townsite and First Courthouse should save the date for April 22nd as a neighborhood joint cleanup. We're still going to talk with staff to nail down the times and whatnot, but so far, we have at least a handful of interested citizens dedicated to that date. And I'm also working with city staff to do a web form fill so that other neighborhoods, if they see the need, can self-organize and make it super streamlined to get that process done. And then Norman students' grades, K through 12, have till April 25th to apply at normanarts.org. For their 2023 summer arts education scholarships, awards may go up to $500. So definitely, if you have kids who are interested in the arts, get on that, get on that before April 25th. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Council member?
Yeah, Ward 5 looks clean. I've gotten a lot of response from the residents, and all the debris from the storm was picked up, and they're right back to where they were. And they all realize that they've got years of cleanup ahead of them, but the city came through, as always. The staff was spectacular, as always. And without the city's help in all this, I can't, can't start to mention everyone involved. You guys all know who were involved in making this happen. The residents of Ward 5, they are appreciative. We got the announcement this afternoon that Access Oklahoma is halting their turnpike expansion until further notice. This was a consolidated victory for all the people, all the volunteers, all the grassroots, the legislators here in the city, up at the Capitol. This is a big deal for Ward 5 in the city of Norman, because this is the second time that it's stopped in the last 50 years. And we'll see what happens in the next couple of years and see if they ramp back up, but for right now, we can all buy ourselves at least one beer and celebrate. It is a celebration. And that's pretty much it. I want to shout out to Amanda. Thank you. She's been a good friend, and this is a, you deserve this award, so congratulations. And Michelle, you are... Yes, you. Right or back? Yeah, you're always so happy. I just thought I'd let you know that. Every time I see you, you're always smiling, you have this positive vibe about you, and that's it. Thank you.
Council member?
Okay, my first comment is to our young men over here getting your badges tonight. The start of the meeting, you heard some kind of interesting things, but the next thing you heard was a bunch of solutions. So if there's anything you can take away from being here tonight, it's that we, as a governing body, should not just talk about problems, but also seek those solutions, right? Because that's what we're elected to do. Okay. So that, Professor Forman's done. Okay. So if you are a Norman resident, Saturday, April 22nd, to you is going to be red and white. If you're a Ward 6 resident, that's going to be your big trash pickup day. To me, that's the most wonderful time of the year. For Lauren Lackey, if you're watching, I will do everything I can to make sure Ward 6 residents don't get their stuff picked up early, because we have a lot of residents who like to put stuff out there. I'm going to encourage Ward 6 residents to put on Facebook if you are getting rid of some stuff. I'm getting rid of a treadmill. If you want a treadmill, send me a message. Stuff like that. So, because these things don't need to go to dumps, right? Because a lot of it can be repurposed. So hopefully, we can push pause on getting it picked up early, Mr. City Manager. Thank you. At least in Ward 6. I don't care about the other days, right? I'm just saying. Okay. So that's Saturday. On May 6th, the Director of Fun, Jason Olson Parks, is going to put together a little graphic, and Council Member Peacock and I are going to do a Sutton Wilderness cleanup at 8:00 AM to 9:30, before it gets too warm, humid, all that stuff. So kind of early, so be looking for us to promote that. Today, the OTA, that's a huge victory for the residents of Norman and Noble and everywhere that it was going to affect. It was going to take out the northern part of my ward, it was going to take out my mother's house in Noble. So I guess the OTA, you know, messed around and found out what Norman residents can do. So hooray for us and to Council Member Tortorello and Dr. Nash and everybody who led groups to our victory. So it's very exciting. And then I did also want to speak to the active shooter thing on Friday. Last week, I was in New Orleans, and I have a, TMI, shellfish allergy, and I was in the city of seafood, and so I got exposed. So I was very sick, so I couldn't go to the law enforcement banquet on Friday night. But laying in bed, I started getting the alerts, so there was an active shooter. I had all these thoughts, like, oh my God, there's victims, do we meet the family? Like, what do we, as a council, do to respond to this? Did they know that all these law enforcement officers were going to be in Norman on this day, and they just wanted everyone to show up? I mean, all these horrible thoughts were running through my mind of what was going on. It was very scary, and every Norman resident, neighbors, neighboring cities, it made national news, everyone was talking about it, and it was incredibly scary. And I'm incredibly grateful that it was nothing, but it's a very big slap in the face to the five people who lost their lives yesterday at a bank in Louisville to an active shooter, and to every parent who's ever buried a child to an active shooter situation. We actually have this as a real threat every day of our lives. So the fact that it was just a hoax, or whatever it was, is just very disgusting and very cruel. And so I would encourage the city manager and the mayor and the rest of council to maybe have public discussions about how we, as a city, could respond if this were to happen here, because at the rate that the nation's going, it's just a matter of not if, but when. So I would like to see further discussions on how we can ensure, or do the best that we can to ensure our residents' safety. And I want to thank Chief Foster in Norman PD, Chief Nate Tarver, a favorite of mine, all of our neighboring agencies that helped and stayed until they made sure that we were safe. And then also to Jennifer Bryan, NPD Officer of the Year. Congratulations. Sorry I wasn't there, but congratulations. Thank you.
Council member, Holman?
Thank you. I also appreciated the opportunity to attend the Public Safety Awards banquet on Friday. Several well-deserving individuals in our community, in the service first responders that do a wonderful job every day, and I appreciate all of our first responders' apparatus in Norman. I think the incident on Friday showed how well-prepared they all are when it comes to police, fire, EMS, and working, having good communication with surrounding agencies as well when the need arises to have that type of help. So I appreciate everybody in Norman and outside of Norman that serves in the first responders' field and is able to address those types of situations in the way that they did. And so also want to encourage everybody to think about Earth Day coming up on April 23rd at Reeves Park here in Norman. I'll be there from noon to 5:00, I believe. Free event, lots of activities for kids and families. It's a really fun time and get an opportunity to learn about environmental initiatives here in Norman. Norman is known statewide for leading the way in those types of things, and we, very exciting things that we can talk about, and hands-on activities for everybody. And so definitely encourage you to come out to Reeves Park on Sunday, the 23rd, for Earth Day Festival. And then I also want to extend an appreciation and thank you to Hitachi, who hosted some of us city officials on Thursday to take a tour of the Hitachi plant here in Norman. There are four, what I call the big four, plants here in Norman, and Hitachi, Avara, Cisco, and Johnson Controls would be those four. And Hitachi has been a facility I've wanted to see more of since I've been a kid growing up in Norman, since the name is so familiar globally. But getting an opportunity to see the inside of the plant and learn more about what they do there was very exciting. to see the inside of the plant and learn more about what they do there was very exciting. I learned a lot that I did not realize, and some of it being that they opened in 1987 and the plant, current plant is completely wind-powered. And they are working to actually eliminate the use of natural gas in the plant as well. And they currently have about 300 employees. And it's the only plant like it in the entire world. So if you have a Hitachi piece of equipment anywhere in the world, it's almost guaranteed that it was made and came from the plant right here in Norman. So, and so that's really exciting. It's really unique for our community to have something like that. So I'm really thankful to have a corporate partner in our city. They went through, undergo, they underwent a massive expansion in 2010 and indicated that they definitely have plans to stay in Norman long-term and future plans for expansion as well that could be very exciting. So I appreciate their staff for taking the time to host us and show us around and encourage all Norman residents to learn more about Hitachi if you're interested. And then lastly, I just would mention a few things about, you know, the shelter situation. The current shelter, the emergency shelter, did start out as a warming shelter a few years ago due to a few deaths related to people being exposed to the winter elements in Norman. And it was determined at that time, we needed to provide an emergency warming shelter at nighttime during the winter. And so that's how it started. But as it evolved, we quickly discovered that the demand and the need for an overnight emergency shelter was really year-round and that it would be used year-round if we had it. You know, winters are very harsh in Oklahoma, but I would just remind everybody that summers in Oklahoma are extremely harsh as well. Just this last July, we set a daily record of 110 degrees in Oklahoma. It broke the record, previous record that was set in 1936. And we're known for having more than 30-plus days, sometimes 60-plus days of consecutive 100-degree days. And when it's that hot, it's 90 degrees at nighttime, in the middle of the night, and it's extremely humid. And there are heat-related illnesses that can occur if people are exposed to that. It can also be very difficult to get around in the morning and get cleaned up and go search for a job or go to the job you have if you've been sleeping outside and sweating all night and those things. So it did start out as a warming shelter, but it has really evolved into an emergency shelter. It is the last resort. If you have nowhere else to go, you have no family, you can't get into Salvation Army, there's no room for you at food and shelter, if you have, if there is nothing else, it's meant to be the last resort for you. And so it is a year-round need that I've, I've seen and that our data has shown us. And, you know, those weather elements in Oklahoma are year-round, really have like three weeks of spring and three weeks of fall. And otherwise, it's really cold or really hot, you know. And so it's just, I just want us to keep that in mind, that there are issues that people deal with no matter what season it is. And that shelter is not the complete answer. And I agree with Councilmember Ball that we can't, some of those things that are taking place, we can't expect people to want to use the parks if they're being used in that way. Now, what the solution is to stop that is a little less clear. You know, rounding up folks, using the police to go round up folks may not be an effective way to address that. So we're dealing folks that are suffering from mental illness. To me, someone in their, I guess, right mind wouldn't do that in the park. They wouldn't defecate in front of equipment that people are going to use if they were in their right, you know, frame of thinking. So our state, our community has a real issue with mental health. We have for a long time. It seems to be becoming more of an issue. And again, we're seeing more folks finding it harder and harder to stay in the homes they have, to keep the jobs they have. And it's just becoming harder all around for a lot of folks that were barely making it before or maybe not making it now. And so there's a lot of reasons why people end up in that situation. And I think we have to, as a community, lead with compassion and understanding and work towards solutions that we can address those, those situations, clean up the parks while taking care of the reason why those folks are in that situation to begin with. So I look forward to working on solutions with my colleagues up here and the community at whole because it is an issue and I think we all care about it. And we all want to do something positive to address it. So anyway, I thank you all for being here and I'm done.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you. I just want to quickly thank Public Works Director Sean O'Leary and his staff. He helped me address some residents' concerns by getting a four-way stop installed at 36th and Franklin. So Ward eight residents, if you're traveling in that area, you'll notice a four-way stop. And I know that's been a long time coming and we were kind of waiting on 36th Avenue to get widened before we did any of those improvements. But I just want to thank staff and for him stepping up and actually getting that addressed. So keep up the good work, guys. Appreciate it.
I'd like to join with my colleagues in thanking OU PD, OU Fire, EMS, our police department, all the other things that, all the people that responded to that last Friday's emergency or seeming emergency. It gives me a sense of, of safety, knowing how well they worked together. And my hat goes off to Chief Tarver and the way that he directed that event. And so thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the consent docket. I need a motion to place items four through 17 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. A motion on the floor is to place items four through 17 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Send the motion to place items four through 17 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Send the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item, well, part six of this is, and recognize Andrew Rieger? I didn't see him here.
I didn't either.
Okay. Oh, you're here in his place. All right. To make brief comments on item five, the CFOB annual report.
Good evening, council. I'm the Vice Chair of the Norman Forward Citizens Financial Oversight Committee. We submitted you a report of the status of the Norman Forward Projects. And I don't know if you had any questions. He told me I didn't have to make comments, but I was here to answer any questions you might have. I will tell you, we're very proud of the progress we've made. All the major, the big-ticket things are set to be completed very soon. I think the senior center at the end of the summer, the Young Family YFAC Athletic Center in, in the fall, October-ish. We look forward to some very nice opening ceremonies to celebrate those. Every time we go by the senior center, I tell my kids, my name's on that beam. And they get mad at me. No, they laugh. Financially, we're doing pretty well, thankfully for some rebounding in sales taxes and some savings on bond financing. So I think we've been very fiscally responsible as a city in keeping budgets in check, being creative about that. So if you have any questions, I'm here to try to answer them. And if not, thank you for accepting our report and for the responsibility you've tasked us with to oversee the project.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you, Cynthia. Cindy. So just to clarify, too, if I'm reading this correct and my understanding is that of all the projects we finished, they've all, except for two of them, come in under budget as well?
That's a trick question. So the tennis center had to be redone and that came in over budget, but that was a small project. And then depending on how you consider the Young Family Athletic Center, which expanded in, I think, scope, but also in other sources of funding were used to shore that up. And then the senior center, which had no budget, came in over budget because there was money and there wasn't any in the original project.
I think this list just shows completed projects.
Okay.
And so Westwood Tennis Center's on there and then just says professional services, ADG as being the two that were over.
So yeah, that one is because when we expanded the scope of mostly the YFAC, then you have to expand those. And also the Senior Wellness Center, I forget what they're calling it, ah.
That's pretty good. Out of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, out of 10 projects, one of them that's, of 10 completed projects, one has come in over budget.
We were very blessed with great timing. In the early projects, borrowing was cheap and construction costs were cheap. So we saved, I think it was $4 million on the Central Library. And now the James Garner extension was a little bit of a stretch because that's when construction costs really exploded. But we got lucky with timing on, on the other projects. And also the AHHA committees were given a budget to work in. So some things had to, everybody didn't get everything on the wish list.
And with the senior center and the Young Family Athletic Center, plan to be finished this year will be substantially complete with the Norman Forward Project list by the end of this calendar.
Absolutely. But we still have to pay it off.
Right. So I say that just to remind everybody, this was a 15-year temporary sales tax. And in October of this year, it will have been eight years since it was approved. So within eight years of a 15-year temporary sales tax, we will have substantially completed the Norman Forward Projects list and a great deal of it under budget. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
Really want to make sure that story gets out there about.
That's a reason for front-loading the projects. So you don't have to worry about inflation and, you know, oopsies, things happening.
Thank you very much, Cindy.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it very much. Non-consent items. Item number 18. An ordinance rezoning property located at 5201, 24th Northeast from A2 Rural Agricultural District to PUD, Planned Unit Development District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Second.
To adopt or reject?
Adopt.
Okay. Just making sure. Is there a representative of the applicant?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hussein Torbati. I'm, I'm a father of a member. I'm a donor. I'm a board member of Sun Hive Collective. I'm also married to the owner of Rela LLC. So I was chosen as the person to talk about this project of ours. Sun Hive Collective is, is, it's hard to explain because there's no such thing in city of Norman. This is, this is designed for children such as mine that have gone through high school with significant disability, disability to the point that they are not able to function independently and, or get a job. They have gone through these Norman schools. They have gone through their 12 years and some of 14 years of school. And afterward, they graduate and they have nowhere to go. So most of these kids and are now adults will end up sitting at home, watching TV, or just not be socialized to, to our society, which is a great, great loss for all of us, for us and, and those kids. And what we, Sun Hive is, Sun Hive was originally founded by a mother of a child, who is now our administrator and, and a teacher of, of Norman North, a special needs teacher. These two got together with the idea of, let's create something for our own kids in city of Norman. And they asked my wife and I to join because we also have a child. And we started talking and see how we can help each other out. The, what we are doing is that we have purchased 20 acres. My wife and I has purchased 20 acres to be leased to Sun Hive for a dollar a year. We are also spending the money to completely redo the inside and the outside of this house that we have purchased along with the 20 acres to meet the needs of our individual members. We are planning on having a maximum of no more than 30 members. So this program only works in smaller groups. Larger groups, we get the same problem as before, they get lost in the shuffle. So the idea of Sun Hive is for these kids, for these adults to go in, have a place to go, Monday through Friday, 7 to 5, to, to stay with their friends. And, and the teachers have got a great program. I was kind of, I was kind of worried about how this is going to work out, but we've seen significant improvement in our kids, in our kid and the rest of the kids. They take them out to the farmers market. They take them out to the shopping. They, they each have a job. They take care of their, things that they can, they can do up to their abilities. Some of them have physical disabilities. Some of them have more mental disabilities and, and what, different degrees of it. So this is, this is what we formed. We formed, we formed Sun Hive. And Sun Hive is coming in four different stages. We are now working on stage one, which is getting the house and the land and the fencing in place for our folks to go into and live there. We met, I, myself and my wife and other board members have met with the neighbors. The neighbors, actually, one of the neighbors is the one that sold us the place. So, so she's all for it. And, and I spoke to the rest of the neighbors. They're all, they did, they had a question or two, but for the most part, everybody's been very, very supportive of this plan. This is not an overnight stay. We will have some weekend activities, but this is, this is just for the, for our kids to have a place to go and to continue being with their friends and continue to improve in their lives. Any questions from any council members?
There any council member questions? Hearing now?
Yes, sir.
Do you guys have any plans for expansion in the future, either on this site or off-site?
The only way to expand is to buy additional land and to do this in, in additional ways. We're only really just touching a drop, just barely touching a drop of what we need. I'm in medicine as in career, as we, we own the Class and Urgent Care Clinic and Class and Family Medicine Clinic. And so 20 years ago, 25 years ago, a whole bunch of kids got diagnosed with autism. But they're not kids anymore. They're adults and they need, they need places like this. And so I'm hoping this is just a start and I'm hoping that other people will pick up the slack.
Well, it's good work that you're doing and I commend you for it.
Thank you.
Any public, any questions from the, the public?
If I may, I'd like to say one more thing.
Please.
This whole process has been so much easier because the city has helped. City's been greatly helping us, the, all the members involved, you know. And it's just been wonderful to see that. As a resident of Norman for what, since 85, you guys do the math. As a resident of Norman for what, since 85, if you guys do the math, it's, it's nice to see that. It's very nice to see that. Yes, thank you.
Evan, did you, did you wish to speak, Evan?
No.
Okay.
All right. Motion on.
Actually, it was Cynthia. Cynthia, did you wish to speak?
I just want to say thank you.
There we go. It's a wonderful speech. A motion on the floor.
We have one more.
We do.
One.
Councilmember, shoot.
Yeah, sorry.
Don't jump on top.
No, that's okay. Questions first, comments after, right? I just want to say thank you for the work that you're doing and the service that you are providing for probably not only our community, but adjacent communities. I think that, you know, it's in a rural area. You're keeping with rural nature, doing, you know, farming and having animals and things like that. So, and it was very nice for you to say from the podium publicly how wonderful our city staff has been in the process. So just want to shout that out to everybody else who's going through planning process. Kudos to our planning department and the way that you're doing. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. It says here, Madam Clark, will you call a row? You want a bid? Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been to adopt the ordinance on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I'll entertain a motion to adopt. We got to do one more, we got to do one more iteration. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion. Motion to.
Motion to approve. Good day. Motion, I've got a motion in second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been to adopt the ordinance on final reading passes unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am. Now you can clap. Item number 19. An ordinance contingent on voter approval of ordinance 0222337, increasing the monthly base fee for residential water meter users to $10.90, increasing the monthly water rates for residential meter users to $3.46 per 1,000 gallons for the first 500, 5,000 gallons of water used, $4.50 per 1,000 gallons for 5,001 to 15,000 gallons used, $6.75 per 1,000 gallons for 15,001 to 20,000 gallons used, and $9.51 per 1,000 gallons for water used in excess of 20,000 gallons, increasing the monthly base fee for non-residential metered users to $10.90, increasing the monthly water rates for non-residential metered users to $4.69 per 1,000 gallons of water used up to such customers' average winter consumption, and $7.04 per 1,000 gallons of water used in excess of such customers' average winter consumption, and providing an effective date for said increase subject to voter approval. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
I have motion in second. Recognize Mr. Chris Mattingly. He's director. The president present this item.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity. I'm Chris Mattingly, Utilities Director. Nathan Maddenwald is our Utilities Engineer. We're going to team up and present information regarding the water rate special election tonight. As you can see, if approved tonight, why do my slides up? Then.
Yay.
So as you can see, if approved tonight, the Norman Water Rate Proposition will be held June 13, 2023. And I was reading on the website of the World Bank and they, they had a good statement about water and the importance. And it said, "Water is at the center of economic and social development. It is vital to maintain health, grow food, manage the environment, and create jobs." And so the title of our public information campaign we're going to put out is to remind everyone the importance of water to our community, and it is "Water is Life." And I had to bring some show and tells to also kind of show real life examples of what we're experiencing out in the water system. But if this passage of the proposition would properly fund the water main replacements, groundwater disinfection, lead and copper rule revisions, and increased operational costs. And so our water treatment plant, many of you know, is, it's 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. We have a staff of 16 that maintain our water plant. They supply our community with 69% of the water coming from Lake Thunderbird. 24% of the water comes from our well field, which is now 41 wells. And 7% is from purchased water from Oklahoma City. We also have a line maintenance division, water line maintenance division, of 25 personnel. And they maintain 650 miles of pipe, of which 280 miles are cast iron or ductile iron. They maintain over 6,000 fire hydrants and over 11,000 valves. And so since 2000, we've had four water rate propositions. Two have passed and two have failed. The last one to pass was 2015. That's eight years ago. The last one to fail was last year, last April, 2022. And so people, we've been asked, how are you able to afford the AMI project if that didn't pass? We barely are pulling it off. What happened was we had made application to the BOR for a water smart program and we got accept and approve of $2 million. We had originally planned to just piecemeal it over the next 10 to 20 years. And as we replaced meters, and this is kind of the old meters set in a meter set like this, as we replaced the old meters, put in the new automated meters with the antennas. And so those would be automatically read with towers versus people driving around in truck, reading 41,000 of these per month. So we discussed it with, you know, having that $2 million opportunity on the table and discussing with our consultants. Consultants said, "This will help you reduce all your, the water loss that you're seeing with your leaks. It's going to increase your meter accuracy and your billing accuracy, should generate the proper amount of cash for the water you're selling. And then it also will eliminate your meter estimating." And we really need that. We get beat up a lot. People don't like it when you, when you estimate their meter and send them a bill off of that. They really are upset about that. And so we entered a 17-year loan, which is not my favorite thing, but that was, that keeps a lower annual payment, so we could pull it off with the budget we have. And if we would have passed it last April, we would have been able to do a financing over a 10-year plan. That's kind of, we were going to do it, pay it off faster, so you could get ready for the, 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 meters are usually like a 20-year life. So in disinfection status, since the, it didn't pass in last April, we're still out of compliance with the disinfection and the distribution. I read in the paper that DEQ representatives said, "As long as we work with them, no fines are coming." I hope they keep that promise. But I show you the last consumer order we had where they fined us four days at $10,000 a day. It was 2014 for our water reclamation facility. And so we negotiated, instead of paying them $40,000 cash, we, we ended up negotiating an $80,000 SEP, which is called a supplemental environmental project. And we were able to put solar panels on top of our UV building. And so at least we spend that money. We spent double the 40, you know, instead of $40,000, we spent $80,000. But these are now reducing our electrical costs for that UV operation. So it's better than just giving someone fine money. So anyway, they did find us in 2014, so I hope they're gonna, they, you know, stated that they're gonna give us grace for a while until we get this passed. And then lead and copper status, since the last rate increase vote we had last April, last August, EPA finalized guidance that's going to make all water systems inventory your lead pipes. And so I brought some, some lead pipes. We estimate we're going to have around 20,000 of these in town. And we, it's going to be on us by October of 2024 to go identify and see if we do have these or not. And that's usually by, you do a vacuum in the mud and actually dig up a portion of this and look at it to put your eyes on it to know if you have these or not. Once we have the inventory, there's continued efforts after that for the rules. But we're budgeting 1.7 million this next year because we know we have to get these inventoried by October 2024. But we also see with that lead and copper rule, we're gonna, we see we need to spend $6 million over the next five years. And then water line status of those 280 miles of water lines that are the ductile iron, cast iron, they continue to break at the most inopportune time. I've been at a few sites. The businesses are upset and they're like, "What do I do?" And they said, "I guess I have to send my employees home." Like, "We're sorry, yeah, we'll try to get it back in operations as fast as we can." But that's usually, it's at least five hours usually to try to dig up the line that's leaking and put a patch around it and get them back in service. And so I had to include some of the, there's usually, I brought the cool ones, actually, the pictures of the fountains. Here, I'll click one. Let's see here. And so usually, they, they actually rupture on the bottom. Usually the hole will form in the, in the metal pipe on the bottom and it washes out people's driveways, roads, you know, you'll have a big washout. And so I have to bring in a lot of sand and gravel. I noticed our line breaks are up this year, very high. It looks like it's going to be our highest amount of line breaks in the last 10 years. And so we had to come back for extra rock and gravel money because we're out of our rock and gravel money this year. But as you saw in these two, these were two that actually busted on the top, so they don't do all the undermining, but they do, you know, shoot the big fountains back up in the air. So just wanted to show you that. And then one of those was, yeah, last summer, one of them's at Duffy and Jenkins. Is this one on the left? The one on the right, I believe, was Rosewood or Rosedale over just south of Westwood. And so then we like to show our actual books of the actual monies that come into our water fund and then our expenditures. So if you look at the top line, total revenues, we usually bring in around $25 million a year, looking at the last three years. Our expenses, usually 11.7 million per year. Actually, though, this recent inflation of electricity chemicals, this is looking like it's going to be over 12 million for the FYE 23. We're only now to April, so we have a few months left, but it's, all projections are looking like it's going to go closer to 12 million. Our loan payments are now in the mid to upper $5 million per year. Our capital equipment, usually around $350,000. We try to keep it there, but again, inflation getting, you'll hear from our public works group, the fleet, trucks, equipment, everything is going up. So I know on line maintenance, this buys our pumps, quickie saws, everything that the guys need to do all of the work in, in the water plant and the water line maintenance. And so they got down to, they needed a $200,000 dump truck or a 100 and something thousand dollar backhoe. And I said, "You can't have both, so you're gonna have to pick one or the other." So they're going to limp along with the backhoe and they went with the dump truck for this year because they said they really need that. So we got to 382. That's, it's not great, but that's about what we have to spend each year. And then the franchise fee is always 5% of your revenues and we give that to the general fund for our rights to be in the right of way. And so, and then the bottom line, so after we get our revenues and then we pay the fixed expenses we have, we usually have $5 to $6 million left to do capital projects, this lead and copper, the disinfection. And what we're seeing is with water line replacements at a million dollars a mile roughly, we just don't have enough money left to do all of these things. So we're kind of triage. We're just picking the worst lines first and then we're going to try to have to meet the disinfection and the lead and copper rules, the new rules coming down, the best we can, but we're feeling pinched, like we're not going to be able to do it all with this low of a balance. And projections for FY '24 are looking like that's getting closer to $4 million balance at the end of the day, so at the end of the year. And so that's when we brought in Raf Telis. And so, and we have to ask, what costs are fair and appropriate for maintaining our community's water system? And here's where I'll hand it off to Nathan to take it with the cost of service.
Thank you, Chris, Mayor and Council. So as Chris mentioned, we hired Raf Telis to do the cost of service study. Similar information we presented to Council before. So it was really a three-part study that they did. First, they had to look at, okay, how much revenue do we need based on our financial plan? What do we need to bring in the door to make sure we're spending or paying all the expenditures we've got to? And then the second part was cost of service. How much should each customer class pay? What would be the fair rate for each class to be paying? And then the third one would be rate design. Okay, you know how much revenue you need, you know how much share each one should pay? What are the rates that justify that or reach that end? So, so in doing the financial plan, covered, what are, what are the revenues that are coming in through the door? Rate revenues, other revenues, loan proceeds, things like that. Then we look at, okay, expenditures, operating, capital, and debt payments that we've got. And they want to make sure at the end of that, that we have some reserves available. We want to have some available for operating, operations in case something goes wrong, and then also capital projects in case something goes wrong. So, and then lastly, we have to make sure we meet our debt service coverage. Otherwise, we could go in default. Anthony could tell you more about that, but we've got to make sure we meet minimum requirements to stay in, in a legal position with those debts. So, so we worked through them with all that. We had them look at different water supply scenarios. Not that that's the main focus of what we're doing here today, but we still, long-term, we're going to have to look at, we've got the plan to do augmentation, but if we did groundwater wells, if we're unable to augmentation, do we groundwater wells? Do we do OKC supply? So we had them look at those different scenarios. And then we also had them look at a theoretical scenario where what if growth didn't occur? What if there was not another house built? What would the revenue requirement need to be in order to meet that? What, what they showed was all, all the scenarios needed to have that revenue requirement. All of them show a similar top graph where you look at what we need to spend for O and M debt and then rate funded CIP, we're not going to get there. So we need to have a revenue adjustment to be able to meet the capital improvement plan that we feel we need to keep our system operating reliably. So we want to get to that bottom graph. The no-growth scenario that we looked at is essentially the same level of rate increase that we're proposing today. So it really isn't an issue of growth, no growth. It's just, this is what we need to do to keep our existing system running. And what that is, is 6.7 million of annual rate adjustment. So now we know, okay, what is the revenue requirement we need for our system? We, Raf Telis looked at, okay, we have residential, commercial irrigation. How do they use water? The different cost categories that we've got, supply, treatment, pumping, storage, transmission and distribution, and metering and customer service. What are all those costs? How much do we spend for each of those categories? And how does that really, each customer class affect those? And looked at, what should we charge each, each of those classes? And they determined that it was close, but they recommended that we not increase the residential rate proposition as much and that they, we'd do more on commercial irrigation just based on the way they use water and how those costs were allocated to them. That was their recommendation and that's how we move forward with this rate because our goal here is to make sure everybody is paying that fair share. We've heard that from the last rate increase, so. Okay, so the next thing that Raf Telis did was give us rate design, but before we jump into that, Chris mentioned some of the key things capital-wise we wanted to look at. So water main replacements, groundwater disinfection, and then lead and copper rule revisions that we're going to have to meet. So what we got shown here is a map of our, our city, our water system. And this is a, we took information from our line maintenance group where we have water main breaks. They put those, our GIS staff geolocated those throughout our system and they were able to create a heat map that shows where we have hotspots for main breaks. So this is 2013 to present, so this is about a 10-year period of what we're seeing. So now water main breaks are one of the factors that we use when we say we're going to put in lines. One is based on water master planning efforts. We've also got streets and street relocation projects that we've got to do, but we thought that this was a pretty big deal showing where we've got hotspots. Not only is a water main break a critical function, so like if you have a break in a particular area, sometimes the consequence of that can create a bigger issue. So if you have a line in an open field that has a break, it's easier to dig up, fix, put back together. You don't spend as much on it, but if you have a line running under Robinson, that's a problem and it breaks because then we have a lot more disruption to our citizens. Because then we have a lot more in disruption to our citizens, traffic, and then also in restoration. Another thing to note on this, this is showing Norman kind of on its own. But we also kind of looked at, okay, what are other cities? What are they dealing with? And so when we see the data from our guys saying how many breaks we've got in our system and we compare that with American Water Works Association, they do regular benchmarking studies to see, compare other utilities. We unfortunately fall kind of in the lower 25th percentile. So we're kind of in the bottom, which is not good, meaning we have more breaks per 100 miles than a lot of other utilities. So that means more bandages that we're going to put out on our system. So that shows what, what we were dealing with. This map is just layering on projects that we've done. So we, we've done a lot of projects here in the last, you know, five to six years to address some of these. Some of these lines that are shown on here are not for main breaks. Some of them are based on projects we need to do in conjunction with roadway jobs. Some of them are based on transmission lines, our water, water models that we needed to do. But we have hit a lot of the hotspots and want to point out a few of those. So if you look on Robinson Street, I don't know if anyone remembers, but 2019, we had the, the break that happened on Mother's Day. Robinson shut down, lots of expense that we had to do in putting back that pavement. The floodwater line going all the way up almost to York, we've replaced that. And two years ago, we had 20, about 25 breaks on that line. Now we've got that line replaced. Hopefully, we don't see any breaks anywhere near there in the short term. We've done a lot of work in the core area. We've also done work over there on Restaurant Row. We've had issues of breaks there under the paving that were expensive and also disrupting business. And then we've also done work in the Crossroads neighborhood. So that's what we've done, what we were looking to do with, with some of this funding. So this map here is showing lines in green that are objects that we have fully funded. Blue lines are showing what we've got in the five-year capital plan that we'd like to do. With the understanding that, like Chris mentioned, we are still kind of doing this as a triage. And so these, where we have main breaks, these are actual problems, disruptions to those customers. And we want, we want to be able to reprioritize as necessary. If we start seeing really problem areas, we want to adjust our project schedules to make sure we're addressing the areas of greatest need or the areas of greatest consequence first. So you can see here with these blue lines shown on this map, we are hitting a lot of those hotspots. We still have more to do. But this gets us about what we're looking at with the green lines and the blue lines shown on this map. We're going to get about 34 miles of, of pipe done. We estimate that to be closely to $47 million in projects that we want to do. So after, water mains are a critical component that we want to address with this rate increase. Chris mentioned the groundwater disinfection that we're still not in compliance with DEQ regulations. So we looked at that project and we trimmed it back quite a bit. We were going to do a ground storage tank, we were going to do a pump station. Thought that that was the best way to design the facility, but we've, due to costs, we've reduced that scope. We've also reduced the size of the building. So project costs, we think, will come down about $10 million. But we do see this as still being a critical point of infrastructure that we need to get done because this is the first step for future treatment at that site when it's needed. We are seeing preliminary rules come out for hexavalent chromium. And then arsenic is something that was addressed in the late, or in the, right around 2000. And there could be something like when we do hexavalent chromium, that might be something we also treat for as well. Chris mentioned lead and copper. That's focused primarily on, you know, the, the service lines, so it's not addressing any of the mains. So work where we have failures on water mains, the service lines are the thing that the EPA is focusing on. I want to stress that we, as Norman, are fully compliant with current rules and we're taking the steps necessary to be compliant with the next rule. Chris mentioned we'll have to do an inventory. With the funding we've got, we won't be able to hit those 20,000 spots that we're, we would say would be unknown based on the age of construction. But we want to, you know, start working through those, start looking at doing a certain amount in particular areas so that way we can do a statistical analysis, try to identify where it is we need to focus our efforts moving forward. In addition to the inventory, we're going to have different sampling requirements. We're going to have to do more samples at other locations. If we do work on a service line, we're going to have to do more communication and provide information and materials to those customers. And as Chris mentioned, we've got about 6 million that we're going to spend in the next five years, we estimate. Okay, so that hits the, the capital cost or the capital project we're looking at. We wanted to address operational costs because as Chris mentioned, those continue to, operational costs continue to eat into the amount available that we have to do capital because these are the first things that we've got to pay. We've got to keep the lights on, we've got to keep treating water, we've got to get that pumped out into our system. And then we'll work on doing capital with what's remaining. So two, two items I wanted to point out here just as an example. So electrical, since FY19 or the past four years, we've increased roughly at a rate of 12.2%. You can see we've gone from roughly about 300,000 to, we're projecting to be over, oh, close, close to half a million. And what I think is interesting is we did do the solar project, so that might be the thing, first thing people ask, like, but solar, and why aren't we saving money? We actually reduced power for the first three months of this calendar year, January, February, March. Where we're, so we were down 15, about 15% in power. We're still paying about 30% more. And that's not something that's in our control, that's just something that we're dealing with, just like our customers are. But it is a cost that we've got to absorb somehow, so. And then also chemicals, we're seeing something similar. Actually, it's, it's worse. We're seeing costs increase almost at 20% a year annually on that. In FY19, we were paying about 550,000. Now we're going to be close to 1.1 million this year, so. That's not any chosen change that we've done, that's just cost increase, so. And just like everyone, we're seeing those costs increase on other items as well. Okay, so I talked about, talked about how we got there for, you know, the financial plan, talked about cost of service, talked about why we really need this. So now kind of we jump into the rates. So what we are proposing to our customers for on the residential side and also on the irrigation side is a base fee increase of $4.90, so that goes on their monthly charge. And then we looked at increasing the tier, the volumetric charge for each tier. You can see them there. So for zero to five, we would go to 3.46. Five to 15, we'd go to 4.50. Block, block three, which is 15 to 20,000, we would go to 6.75. And then over 20,000 gallons per month, we would go to $9.51. And so you will note with the, with the larger increase in the fixed charge, we did keep the two lower tiers a little bit. We didn't increase them as much as the higher tiers goal, trying to still keep that monthly charge down as much as we can. But then the two higher tiers, block three and block four, we did want to raise those up higher just to help encourage conservation. Because those residential customers or irrigation customers, that is a discretionary water use. So we want to make sure we're using our water efficiently. And then over there to the right, we did get questions about commercial improvement charge. So that is a set rate every month for our customers. They pay $1.50 for water and then they pay 50 cents for sewer. That's $2 for, per home every month, that does not change. Multifamily, that would be $2 per unit. We're not proposing to any changes to that with this, but just wanted to make that clear because it is a little bit different on the commercial side, so. So what does that mean for our customers on a base rate comparison? When we look at, in relation to other peer cities for a 3/4 inch meter, we're, we're currently third on that graph there. We would bump up, we'd get above Midwest City, but we'd still be fourth, still be in the bottom half of this metro comparison. If we look at 3/4 inch meter at 5,000 gallons usage, which is roughly 2/3 of the bills that we issue, customers would expect a cost increase to go from, you know, $24.25 up, up for 45 to $29 and, or $5.45 to 29.70. So if we look at it on a 10,000 gallon, which is some of our higher users, this would be a little bit less than 90% of the bills that we issue. They would expect to see a $7.45 increase. We would go from, just like the previous graph, we were lowest currently, we would go from lowest to second, so. If we look at that for the whole utility bill, where we add in water, sewer and solid waste and recycling, we're currently shown as the, the lowest on the, on the graph. We will still remain the lowest, though we increased by that $7.45. Okay, so that was residential and also that would have covered irrigation, the same rates for that. So if we look at the commercial rates, same base charge increase. For commercial rates, since each business is different, there's no set level that a business should use in a winter month versus a summer month. They're all looked at individually, so they look at a business's average winter consumption. If you use above that outside of those months, then you get charged at the above winter consumption rate. So the winter consumption rate is $4.69 per thousand, so we've increased that. And then also they had above average winter consumption going from $4.20 to $7.04. And, and so you might see some of that difference here. This was the cost of service saying we needed to adjust that a little bit, so you see that here in this rate. So we had questions on the commercial or the capital improvement charge for commercial. So theirs is calculated at 60% of the sewer base and volume charge. So there's actually, they're, they have a minimum CIC, so if they use no water, their minimum CIC would be $3 because it's 60% of the base charge. But theirs is proportional to the volume used, so theirs will go up in comparison to our residential customers. We had questions about that, so I just wanted to make that clear. So if we look at commercial customers in relation to other peer cities in the metro area, currently we're lowest with this rate increase, we would go to fourth lowest, still in the bottom half. So for, this is at a 1-inch meter, 10,000 gallons, just looking at the water only. And looking at water in combination with sewer, didn't include solid waste on this because each city does their, their solid waste different. For commercial, some people provide it, other cities require them to go through a, a private entity. So showing this for a 1-inch meter, 10,000 gallons usage and 8,000 gallons sewer, you can see we're lowest on the list, but we go to third. So still very competitive in the metro, still in the bottom half. So here's the information for, for voting. So we have early voting on June 8th and 9th, if this, if the ordinance is approved. And then also the election will be on Tuesday, June 13th. We are working to get our bill calculator up on our website so people can plug in their current rate, see what their proposed, what it will be with the proposed rates. Or also the cost of service study is available online. If anybody needs information about that, happy to provide that. And with that, Chris and I would be happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Councilmember Foreman?
Hello. All right, Mr. Mattingly, you know, I'm a really big fan of this. I wanted to give you all the money for water. It's unfortunate, I was really actually angry last year when this didn't pass. I know a lot of people have issues with city staff or us as council, but I don't think this is the hill to die on, right? Don't hold hostage clean water from your neighbors because we do wind up paying for it in the end, out of the general fund, right? Like keeping us from doing other things with the money. So whatever we can do on the proposed, like heat map thing, my street was like completely in the red, so like, I didn't like that. But what are we going to do to market and campaign this differently than last year? Because I don't read my bill. I mean, I get the email and I just pay it online and I, and that's it. So what are we, what are we going to do to try to campaign this and get this really out there?
So, so our, our goal, all we can do is just put out information and, and try to make sure everyone is well-informed when they vote. We are not allowed to say vote yes or vote no.
Oh, sure.
We just have to show what the situation is. And luckily, we have Tiffany in our communications department. And so she has prepared some short little videos, things that will be available on our website. We plan to go tour, anybody that wants to have us come talk, we can set up maybe some regional meetings and.
Some award meetings?
Yeah, we, I know we did one last year out on East Library, we hit all the libraries, the Rotary Clubs, Lions Club. So we're going to start letting everyone know that we're available to come speak and try to provide that information. So everyone has a well-informed decision. And I'm with you, I mean, the, the numbers are just getting low. So the reliability of our water system, third largest city in Oklahoma, is not looking good. And that's what I got to let everyone know. And if we're okay with that, then I, I can see these people when we, these lines break in their neighborhood and they say, wow, we'll vote for it now. So I'm winning one heart and mind at a time. That's not good.
No.
I really don't want it to be bad. I, it makes you feel bad when they say, I got to send my employees home or, you know.
Sure.
The different things happen. So we hopefully, we want to show this that we could do better if we would just put more money towards it and do preventative maintenance versus this, wait till it breaks and then go in and put in a clamp around it and thinking everything's okay.
Right, I think the residents of Royal Oaks are probably going to turn out to, to make sure that this passes. When we do advertise this, can we really focus on like those types of pictures of what really happens and then the consequences to the rest? And maybe Mr. City Manager, talk with Mr. Francisco about how much we have to pull from the general fund to, to buy water because we're losing it and all types of things, like really, like hit them with the facts and not just, it's clean water. Which is, should be important enough, but apparently it's not, so.
No, good points.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you, thank you, Chris. So you mentioned that, that's a point that I've tried to make a lot, that the last water rate increase was almost nine years ago in 2015. And the one before that was 2006 and the one before that, I think, was 1999. So there have been two water rate increases approved by voters in Norman in the last 24 years. And in your experience, do other cities typically raise these rates yearly?
Yes, we looked at several other cities in envy because they do address it on small incremental.
Right.
Over time versus waiting and then needing a large increase. And Nathan's got excellent graphs, we didn't bring him tonight, but it shows the, the 3% CPI over time. And, and we kind of do that. We, when we make up, we get right back to that 3% line. And so that's kind of where we've gotten now, we're way below the line. And so this rate increase will get us back on that, that CPI that's been going for everyone else and every other commodity out there.
So it could be agreeable to say that voting on utilities has maybe a factor in why we're the lowest. We've been able to keep the costs down because we don't ask for it very often. But when we do, it's not a small increase usually. It's one that you'll notice on your bill, which can work to make people not want to approve it then because it's like, well, I don't want it to jump up that much.
Right.
And not thinking, well, but I haven't had a rate increase in nine years, so. What other bill, household bill does anybody have that hasn't gone up in that amount of time? I can't think of any, but. So, and you mentioned too that we are not expanding the water treatment facility with this rate increase.
No, this one doesn't give us any additional water.
No capacity.
Just, it's going to make us more reliable and hopefully meet some of these DEQ rules, EPA rules that are coming out.
And that's the big part is the, the requirements that we have to meet are changing often and not generally getting less restrictive, I would, I would assume. And so I think we've seen that, you know, with the 2006 arsenic rules were changed, lowered and X amount, half the wells the city had couldn't meet that standard anymore and had to be turned off. And OU lost all of their wells and had to become the city's number one water customer after that. And then we've always been in compliance with the Chromium 6, the existing rules. But concern about whether if they're lowered to what we think they're going to be lowered to, can we continue meeting that? And now other, we have to treat groundwater now when we never had to before. We were able to always blend it with the water treatment plant, but now we're going to have to treat that water separately. Which has been in our plans, groundwater treatment plant, but very expensive. And so just in your experience, there's been a lot of changes, a lot more strict regulatory requirements and new stuff coming down all the time. And it doesn't, in your opinion, does it typically matter what presidential administration or anything? These rules are always changing no matter who's.
They're always changing, but no, it, it does sometimes go with the flavor of the, of the politics.
I mean, not as stringent perhaps?
Yes.
So, but in your time, in your position, I don't, you've not probably seen regulations lighten up on water quality.
No, it can, it's continually going to push for safer water.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, thank you, Chris, I appreciate that.
One question I have, Mr. Mattingly, in, in looking at lead pipe, you were talking about things that were coming. Now we're also going to pay the price for what's happened. Didn't we quit using lead pipe in the 60s? Just a guess?
He's good. No, it was, it was 1986.
No joke.
Yeah, and based on when it was adopted in the standard plumbing code, we talked with DEQ. We adopted it in 19, late 1989. So being conservative when we do our inventory, we're assuming anything built before 1991 would, would be suspect. Anything after 1991 or 1991 and after, we're saying should be lead-free.
And I forgot the, the number that you put down there on your slide. You had that calculated as to what you thought, how many feet that was or?
No, not, for the lead service line, how many feet? It's, it's real, it's kind of complex because they're looking at it as if you have any component of lead. of lead, if it's metal lined past that, so they're not looking at it on a per footage. It's more just looking at a count. So we think there's roughly 20,000 that we're going to have to investigate.
Good going.
Yes.
And that's from the, that's from the main to the meter?
And the thing with the new EPA rule is they're making you go from the meter to the house. You've got to know what's there on the private side as well because what they're saying is if you've got lead on this side and a certain type of pipe on this side, on the private side, you could have put lead into that pipe, which is then now ingrained with lead.
Exactly.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, sir.
We do have some public comments, Mayor. We'll start with Paul Wilson. Okay. Cynthia. Evan?
Thank you, staff. I support this. And I, I think that it would have an even greater chance of being passed if we coupled it with a gardening incentives bond. I have a couple of questions from a woman here who can't speak. If the chair will allow me to pose these. Will this curtail having arsenic in the water? And the second one is how much of our water will be used to grow marijuana? Thank you.
I'll address the, the arsenic. The current rule is 10 parts per billion. And we meet under, under 10 parts per billion for all of our water right now. We do have some wells that are slightly over that, that if we blend them, but it's not intentional blending, but when you bring all of the wells combined into one spot, the ones that are two parts or, you know, three parts will, will bring that 11 or 12 part down to within an acceptable range. But we also, by bringing them to this disinfection site, our goal is to one day set up a treatment plant so that we could be able to treat for arsenic because we think the rules might get tighter in the future. And the other one we're really concerned about is the chromium, Chromium six. Right now, it's 100 parts per billion is the number that's allowed. And I saw an EPA toxicity, it's outdraft, and it was showing it could go as low as 0.038 parts per billion. That would be probably, we'll have to turn the wells off. I don't think we could treat to that. California lowered it to a 10 part per billion. We could get there. That's what we kind of have planned for. But if it goes much lower than five parts per billion, we're, we're going to probably have to get out of the well business. And so that's 30% of our water supply today that we might have to figure out a way to replace in the future.
And do you know the number of marijuana growers?
No, I don't. I don't know that. I, I know, we don't have many in the rural, so it'd just be a city growth. So we, we're pretty much between, you know, 48 East and 48 West is our water system.
Okay, that's all of those.
That's all the public comment? Are there any final comments from, from?
Didn't I?
You hit abstain by mistake. Sorry, he can't do that.
Dragging.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance on second reading passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Excellent. You want your toys back? Okay. Item 20, an ordinance authorizing the calling and holding of a special election in the city of Norman on the third day of June 2023 for the purpose of submitting to the registered voters of the city of Norman the question of approving or rejecting a water rate increase as stated in the previous item. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Second.
This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions from council regarding? Hearing none. And then for the final comments from council regarding the same. Okay. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt, or, excuse me, to adopt the ordinance on final reading.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 21, I need a mo, uh, excuse me, a resolution giving the Secretary of the Cleveland County Election Board notice of a special election to be held on June 13th, 2023. I need a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Second.
This is a companion item to the previous two items. Are there any further questions from council? Comments? Are there any further comments from council? Excellent. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, this, this section is miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be made to the, to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Do we have anybody signed up?
Susan McNeil?
I wrote that I live in Ward Three, but I believe I actually live in Ward Four. And I sometimes have trouble navigating the city of Norman's website. I found an old map where it showed I used to live in Ward Eight. And I kept looking and I guess I found the right map. But what I wanted to talk about is the new Norman Transit Center on Porter. And I was, I live right across the street behind the car dealership. And I was looking online for any information about that. And I mean, I looked for two hours and I never could find anything about it. And a lot of the information about the Norman Forward Program or Norman 2025, I saw dates as far back as 2008, 2012, 2015. And the latest was maybe 2020, but that didn't have anything to do with the transportation. So I, first of all, I don't know why I wasn't notified that this was going to happen. I have a child, so I'm a little bit concerned about what actually is going in there. My son thought that maybe it was going to be like the buses are going to move from Brooks for the city of Norman to there. But then we thought, well, you know, it's, the ceiling is too low for buses. So we thought maybe they're going to just, you know, take everything off so they could go in there. But it looks like they're putting a new roof on. And so I just really don't know what's going on over there. I don't know if my property values are going to drop, if there's going to be people over there all the time, you know, walking up and down the street, waiting for buses. You know, I don't know. When the warming center was on Comanche, you know, we had a lot of problem with homeless people and trash and, you know, that murder that was over there scared the heck out of my daughter. And I've been able to put a fence up across my front yard just to make her feel a little safer. But I just, I would like to know, you know, what's going on, what's going in over there? And why isn't the city of Norman's, you know, website more up to date? Like what's going on in 2022 and 2023? And, you know, what are the plans for some of these construction projects that are, are not even on, included online? And so.
Larry's behind you and he's going to give you an answer to your question.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate it.
You bet.
Next, we have Susan Smith.
Susan Smith, Ward One. First of all, see this agenda? This nice police officer out here wanted to sell it to me for a dollar. So he was joking though. I support the water rate increase. I, my income is well below the poverty level. And in order for me to pay for this increase, I would have to go to Brahms one less time a month. So if I can afford it, then everybody else in this city can afford it too. Maybe not everybody, but most people can. I used to be a Blue Thumb volunteer and several years ago, the famous Karen Chapman and I used to go creek cleaning in Wood Creek Park in Ward One. One day, we scooted down a culvert where there was a big drain going into Wood Creek Park into the creek. I was standing in raw sewage. I mean, it was horrible. And these pipes are over 100 years old and they need to be replaced. This is people's drinking water. This is people's drinking water. This is a serious issue. Another time I went in the same area, in the same area of the creek and that big piece of pipe that he showed you, I picked up a piece of pipe out of the creek that big around, all rested. And I also found numerous other pieces of lead pipe in the bottom of the creek. This is a serious issue that needs to be addressed. And it's up to the taxpayers to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Cynthia?
Hello again. Yeah, we need water. We need to invest in our water infrastructure. It's the most important economic development issue of the city, which is why I'm completely frustrated that we put votes for other things before this, including Norman Forward. So I think we could do better about that. But what I wanted to comment about tonight was the OU alerts, the scary situation on campus that turned out to be a false alarm. It's really just up the street from my office where I spend a lot of time. But as a reminder of that, a year ago, almost a year ago today, a man was actually killed on Lindsay Avenue, just south of Dale Hall. He was an unarmed man. He was jogging and he was shot by a driver in a car who was scared about what he might do. To me, that is really scaring. It's really scary that the district attorney filed no charges, not even unlawful discharge of a weapon, involuntary manslaughter, and it was a stand, on the argument of the stand your ground law. There's no evidence that Mr. Ewens even got close to his car. Definitely no physical contact between the victim, which is Mr. Ewens, and the person that shot him. To me, that is alarming. To me, it's alarming, the community response, the city response, the university's response, they told me, didn't involve OU police, so they had really no comment about it. Students were freaked out. They're still freaked out about this. I find it alarming that somebody can shoot you dead because they think you might do something to them. And that was a city street, but it's essentially on campus. Another tragedy was Shannon Hanschitt's death at the county detention center as a result of actions taken by Norman police following Norman police protocol. To me, we need to have a discussion about that so that doesn't happen again. I haven't seen that discussion happen about whether we could do better, how we could do better. I know we've talked about emergency crisis response team, and that's certainly part of the discussion, but really it's time to get off our butts and move forward so we have better options. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Evan?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. My name is Evan Dunn. I live at 1400 Garfield Avenue in Ward Seven. And I brought some things here with me. I'm not a employee of Dollar Tree, but they are making some of these interlocking planters. These are $1.25. We've got these for $1.25. These are $1.25. You can't have these. These are mine. But just so you know that they're available, Dollar Tree has them. And they have packets of seeds, four for $1. Can't beat it. Okay, so I've been doing a lot of gardening. I've been going to the compost center and I've been getting these loads for $10 a pop. And the guys out there, Jeremy, Dustin, Brian Holt, these guys, they want to help, they want to serve, and they do a really good job in situations that are not always conducive to being chipper and, and being in a good mood. One thing that I thought about was what if we created an electronics recycling center? And we dovetailed it with some type of educational program where young people can break apart or, you know, they can, they can open up these electronics and they can see these components and they can see the way that the atomic theory is making all of these seemingly disparate pieces of technology that seem so magical, but to see their insides, I think that that could really help young people, anyone. Regarding the homeless situation, we have 67 parks. Couldn't we take 25% of that and task the homeless individuals who want to be productive, who want to have purpose? Getting your hands in the soil and creating life, fostering it and cultivating it, I think that that's a missing part of our experience. Uh, it's just an idea. When we take oaths to protect and defend the Constitution, it's not so much for us, it's for the other Americans. And that's something that I try to remind myself about. And I hope that my mom, who's probably watching, I hope that she thinks that I've been respectful because that was her advice to me in how I disclose these ideas and thoughts that I have. So.
Anybody else? Any further comments from council?